All right. Good evening, and welcome to the Tuesday, November 11th, 2025 Lawrence City Commission Meeting. First item of my agenda is to recess into executive session.
I move to recess into executive session for approximately 20 minutes to discuss privileged legal communications from the city's attorney regarding state law pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. The justification for the executive session is to keep attorney-client privileged matters confidential at this time. The city commission will resume its regular meeting in the city commission room at approximately 5:21 after the executive session is concluded.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Finkel-Dai, and a second by Sellers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Back at 5:21. Back from our first portion of our executive session, and now we have to recess into a secondary one.
We have nothing to report, Thomas.
And we have nothing to report from our first executive session. Thank you.
I move to recess into executive session for approximately 10 minutes to discuss a personnel matter involving a city employee pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception, KSA 75-4319B1. The justification for the executive session is to protect employee privacy. The city commission will resume its regular meeting in the city commission room at approximately 5:31, 5:32 PM, 5:32 PM after the executive session is concluded.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Finkel-Dai, and a second by Larson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We'll see you in 10 minutes. We'll see you in 10 minutes. Sorry, we came back from our executive session at 5:32, and we have nothing to report from the executive session.
We'll start back at 5:30.
Start back at the meeting at 5:45, which is about 10 minutes from now.
[inaudible]
Sorry, we came back from our executive session at 5:32, and we have nothing to report from the executive session.
We'll start back at 5:30.
Start back at the meeting at 5:45, which is about 10 minutes from now.
[inaudible]
Sorry, we came back from our executive session at 5:32, and we have nothing to report from the executive session. We'll start back at 5:30. Start back at the meeting at 5:45, which is about 10 minutes from now.
[inaudible]
And our next proclamation is to also proclaim November 2025 as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month, and today I know we have some important people in our community, and I'll let them introduce themselves when they come up to the podium, starting with Ms. D.
It's okay if I give a little speech?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, we just wanted to thank you so much, Commissioners, for allowing us to be here and recognizing this proclamation. I'm honored to be here on half of the city's Homeless Solutions Division and the Homeless Response Team and our colleagues from Lawrence Community Shelter and Just Foods. This is my third year standing here before the commission accepting this proclamation, and the first two times, I'll be really honest, I was so deep in the work that I really didn't stop to think about what it really meant and take in, you know, what this really means to this community. And so I was reflecting on it for a few days, and... When prompted, select "Join as panelist." There will be a brief delay as your role changes. Once your name is called, please unmute and turn on your camera to provide your comments. Please state your name and zip code before providing your comments. Comments will be limited to three minutes. The city reserves the right to turn videos off or mute participants. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sherri. The next item is to approve the agenda, and the City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as is?
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
It's a motion to approve the agenda by Finkeldi, second by Littlejohn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, the next item on our agenda are two proclamations. And the first one is to proclaim November 2025 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month. And Sarah Randolph from the Bridge Haven and Nuvaun House is here to receive the proclamation and maybe give us some introduction to this proclamation.
Thank you so much. I am, my name's Sarah Randolph. I'm here to represent our residents we care for at both our communities. This is Haley Patterson. She is here to represent the staff that provides the care. And this is Cosmosena, and he is here to represent the families of our residents.
Great, thank you. Well, we appreciate, of course, anyone who helps service those with these needs and it's growing concern until we can find solutions to the problem. But we appreciate the care and the time that you all take with people who experience this horrible disease. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Alzheimer's is a disease that is accompanied by symptoms of memory loss and other debilities. More than 6 million adults in the United States suffer from Alzheimer's disease, including some of our own citizens. And whereas the symptoms that accompany Alzheimer's and other dementia may include loss of cognitive function in areas of language, memory, visual, spatial abilities, and decision-making. There is no existing cure for Alzheimer's, but we do have promising research studies being held in our region. And whereas Bridge Haven Memory Care Homes and Nuvaun House of Lawrence residents advocate for awareness, treatment, and a cure. Now therefore, I, Mike Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do proclaim the month of November 2025 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month and urge all of our citizens to extend their support to those struggling with Alzheimer's and other dementias. Thank you very much. (applause).
Thank you.
And our next proclamation is to also proclaim November 2025 as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month. And today, I know, we have some important people in our community, and I'll let them introduce themselves when they come up to the podium, starting with Misty.
It's okay if I give a little speech?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we just wanted to thank you so much, Commissioners, for allowing us to be here and recognizing this proclamation. I'm honored to be here on behalf of the city's Homeless Solutions Division and the Homeless Response Team and our colleagues from Lawrence Community Shelter and Just Foods. This is my third year standing here before the commission accepting this proclamation. And the first two times, I'll be really honest, I was so deep in the work that I really didn't stop to think about what it really meant and take in, you know, what this really means to this community. And so I was reflecting on it for a few days. And, you know, a proclamation here is not just words on a paper. It's a public statement of our city's values. Oh goodness. And priorities. And I don't, oh, shoot. I don't want this one to fill routine. It's like something that we do because it's November, because this one matters. What's happened here in Lawrence is not just symbolic, it's transformational. And this community has truly embraced the idea that no one should go hungry and no one should have to sleep outside. I can't tell you how proud I am to work for this community where the majority of residents voted to tax themselves to take care of their unsheltered neighbors, where you city leaders consistently lead with compassion and integrity, balancing practicality with heart. Deeply grateful to City Manager, who gives us the space and freedom to be innovative and build a model of care and coordination that, to my knowledge, has not been replicated in any other city. Because of City Manager and Brandon's support, unsheltered homelessness in Lawrence has decreased by 63% in one year and overall by 30%. While those numbers are extremely impressive and important, what's really happened was those of us standing here and many of our colleagues that aren't here have been able to build healing, trusting relationships with hundreds of people, reminding them of their worth and their value, helping them realize they deserve to sleep safely every night indoors, guiding them through reconnecting with family and walking beside them as they rebuild their lives. So I just want to say thank you to each of you, to our partners, our community, for showing when a city truly commits to taking care of its neighbors, extraordinary things can happen. I want to pass it to my colleagues real quick, but thank you from all of us.
Thank you, Misty.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Honore Walker. I am the Executive Director of Just Food, and I just wanted to take a moment and say this proclamation is so important. It's a reminder of our shared responsibility to ensure that everyone in our community has access to the most basic human needs, which are food and shelter. At Just Food, each and every day, we see firsthand how hunger intersects with housing instability. When people are forced to choose between paying their rent and buying groceries, no one wins. Hunger and homelessness are not issues of individual failure, but symptoms of systems that need our collective attention and compassion. This month, we're called to both awareness and action. It's a time to listen to the stories of our neighbors, to support the organizations in our community doing the work every single day. On behalf of Just Food and our partners across the community, I just want to say thank you for standing with us and for recognizing that no one in our community should have to go without food or a place to call home. Together, we can ensure that everyone has dignity, stability, and nourishment they deserve. Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor, Commissioners, and members of the community. On behalf of the Lawrence Community Shelter, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for this proclamation recognizing Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Your acknowledgement of this week underscores our community's shared commitment to compassion, dignity, and justice for all who call Lawrence home. Every day at the shelter, we witness the realities faced by individuals and families experiencing homelessness. We see parents striving to provide stability for their children, individuals working to overcome barriers, and neighbors doing the best to rebuild their lives. These are our community members, people with hopes, talents, and dreams who deserve the same opportunities and respect as everyone else. This proclamation is a meaningful reminder that addressing homelessness and hunger requires a collective effort. It takes the dedication of city leaders, the partnership of local organizations, and the advocacy of residents, and the support of volunteers and donors who believe that everyone deserves a safe place to call home. We are deeply grateful for the city's ongoing partnership and for your leadership in shining a light on these critical issues. Together, we can continue building a Lawrence where every person has access to food, shelter, and the opportunity to thrive. Thank you for your recognition and for your continued commitment to creating a more just and caring community. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Or is that? No? Okay. Shai.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I could just, a quick point of personal privilege, just wanted to share, I shared with Misty, I just wanted to share collectively that although sometimes we don't hear a lot of the positive work that your team is doing, and sometimes it gets, it gets laid to the side for other news or things that are more splashy, but I've had several colleagues within the National League of Cities reach out to me and just say, you know, how are you guys doing this? How are you processing through it? And as well as, they reach out to me to say, well, you give us hope that if you guys can traverse and prevail through this, then we can too. So, you know, your work is rippling out to other municipalities who are still trying to figure it out, and they're looking to you all, and they look to see what you've done and what we have done to kind of be their catalyst. So just another Sherri to add on the top to just say, you guys are doing the work and people are seeing it, not just here in Lawrence, but across the country.
Thank you.
Indeed. It's a lot said tonight, and I think Commissioner Sellers nailed it. I think when outside people are looking at you with pride, then the rest of us should feel some as well. And what you've done is difficult, but we've got a lot of work to do ahead of us, and every day is a new one, and I appreciate the work you do, and I know what the Commissioners do as well. So I'm going to go ahead and read your proclamation. Whereas the National Coalition for Homeless Sponsors Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, held annually the week before Thanksgiving, is an opportunity for communities to contribute, advocate, reach out, educate, and most importantly, take action to end homelessness. And whereas this proclamation aims to increase awareness of the systemic factors contributing to hunger and homelessness, including the rising costs of housing in Lawrence, economic instability, behavioral health challenges and barriers to accessing services, and to encourage participation in community service, local advocacy, and efforts that advance sustainable solutions. And whereas Lawrence has made significant progress in reducing homelessness through collaborative initiatives and innovative strategies centered on affordable housing, outreach, and access to care, sustaining and expanding this progress requires continued commitment, investment, and partnership across the entire community. And whereas the City of Lawrence recognizes and appreciates the dedication of our volunteers, the service providers, the faith communities, our first responders, and the organizations whose work contributes daily to a more compassionate and inclusive community. And whereas individuals experiencing homelessness and food insecurity face heightened risk to their physical and mental health, ensuring access to permanent housing, nutritious food, and supportive housing is essential to advancing dignity, safety, and the well-being for all of our residents. Now therefore, I, Mike Dever, the Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month, and urge everyone to support efforts to end hunger and homelessness in our community. Thank you.[1103.01][1103.01](applause). I'm going to go ahead and read the fine print here. Items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and approved by one motion. Members of the governing body may remove items for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public may remove items identified as quasi-judicial for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comments on these items that were pulled.
Mayor, I'd like to pull D5C related to the municipal court fines.
Okay, that's D5C. This is going to be pulled. Anything else? All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda minus D5C?
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of D5C.
Second.
It's a motion to approve the consent agenda by Finkeldi, second by Sellers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, item.
Yeah, we had a couple emails about this. I know Chris Flowers sent one in, and he asked, and so I'll let him speak first, and I think we'll have Vicky from the court answer a few questions we got on emails, but go ahead, Chris.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers. And first of all, I just kind of threw this while I was sitting there, but I have a problem with, like, when it comes to the fines for going over the speed limit, one through nine is all the same, I think it's $50 for, so if you go one mile over, you're getting fined 50. If you go nine, you're going, you're going to get fined 50. I don't, I don't think we should be fining that much. I think it's just, it should just be a dollar fine for four or more over, because when it comes to, like, if I want to put a speed hump on my street, the city's going to do a study, and I believe it, it's more than one mile, but it has to be so many miles over the speed limit for it to be considered a problem. So from that logic, why should going, like, one mile over be, have the same punishment as going nine over when the city itself has said, well, going one over isn't as bad as going over this specific amount that is our threshold to get a speed hump put in? So I just want to throw that out there. But my bigger problem is, I don't think this is equitable. I, I don't, I think if we're going to have fines, it should be based on your income. So if, if you make $10 an hour, like, if you, if you make $10 an hour, how is a $50 fine the same punishment to you as if you make $50 an hour, when it's going to take you five times as long to make that amount to pay off that ticket, I guess? So wouldn't the equitable way be to base it on income or no fines at all and you do community service? And if, to get out of it, you'd have to be disabled or whatever? So I just want to throw that out there. Also, Sellers likes to talk about averages and, like, I just wanted to ask, what are the fines based on? Is this based on an average? And if it is an aver, like, the average income, is it based on the average income of the general population or the people that are being ticketed? And I do want to know that, like, what is this amount based on? Are we, I have another question is, are we punishing the poor too harshly, or are we letting the rich get by with just not enough punishment? Because, or are you just going to argue, well, they're both the same punishment because it's $50? Let's see. Also, if speeding is a public health hazard, how is undercharging the wealthy going to change their behavior? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, any other feedback on this item?
We do have some on Zoom, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Samuel Carter, 66046, and I think something that's worth mentioning is that the, the costs of excessive speeding are not borne equally in our society. And it's not just, the costs are not just the fines, but the increased risks of traffic crashes, injuries, fatalities, the engineering and construction that goes into trying to prevent speeding, and of course, the EMS necessary to treat folks when crashes, high-speed crashes in particular, do occur. There are so many costs associated with speeding, and far too often, the people who bear the brunt of those costs are people who are not driving, who are vulnerable, and oftentimes are, are low-income. I think these fines, they are modest. They do not keep up with inflation. But the equity question, I think it is, it is an important one, you know, and I think that, you know, some of the issues that Chris raised are certainly worth thinking about and considering. And in a better society, I do believe that we should and would have progressive fines. But I think it's also really important to keep in mind who is driving, who's walking, who's biking, who's taking public transit. And research has just, has shown over and over that car, car use is generally tightly correlated with income. So the higher income that you have, the more you drive. And I think both in terms of, you know, who is, who is causing the costs, you know, to society at large, and who is bearing the brunt of those costs, I think are the two important equity considerations. If this is something that, you know, that the commission wants to explore further, I think it's something that would be worth having the Equity Office look into to try to get a full account of what are the equity impacts of speeding in particular, and also, you know, is, is our filing regime, is that fair? Thank you, that's all I have.
Thanks, Samuel.
If you just joined, move to panelists, you go ahead and provide your comments.
I think Sherri's microphone is the only active microphone in the room tonight, so could you have your AV technicians check on the audio? Other than that, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
That is all.
Thank you.
Anything else?
We do have one more. Just trying to get people moved.
Aye, this is absolutely incredible. Just as the other individual noted, we can't hear shit out here in Zoomland because of the incompetence associated with the people who have had more than enough time to get this stuff right. Why am I sitting here listening to this level of ignorance, which means I'm not hearing shit? So can you please fix it? I don't even know what this matter is about. I have to use this three minutes to tell you just how fucked up, yeah, I said it, fucked up this shit is. The civility associated with interacting with my government centers around my government provided me with an honest sense of speech. I got some other shit to talk about later on. Can you fix this fucking shit? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, I said it online.
That's all the online comments.
Okay, cool. Comment on the speeding fines list?
Was Vicky here? I thought you said, I'm here to speak. I thought you said, Mayor, I thought you said, well, we had staff here to speak, and I didn't know if.
Oh, not, yeah, we're going to, oh, you mean to take public comment after that?
Well, no, I just thought maybe we were going to have staff speak before public comment, so just speak on the.
A little too late on that one.[1753.23][1753.23](laughter). Sorry about that. Thank you.
Can I speak, Mike?
Please.
All right. How were the, the last two comments, the last two commenters? How was any of that germane to this item right here? Speaking about the audio issues here has what to do with this item? You guys are so, so strong about everything having to be germane here, so why were they allowed to speak on that? But in the past, when I speak on something that you guys say ain't germane, then I get removed from here, have my rights violated. Why, why do they get to speak on that?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, so, Vicky, please proceed to the. Okay, so, Vicki, please proceed to the, before I got a chance to look at the schedule
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you this evening, for your consideration, is ordinance number 10174 amending Chapter 17, Section 103 of the City Code, increasing the penalties for traffic and speeding fines, traffic infraction and speeding fines, and those penalties being increased. There were some great questions that were posed by members of the community as well as some this evening, and I thought I would just go through those that the community raised, and I will also answer the ones that were raised here this evening. And then if there are any additional questions at the end, I'm happy to answer those. What percentage of the overall number of citations issued are delinquent and what gets turned over to a collection agency? Only a small portion of traffic infractions become delinquent, demonstrating that most people meet their obligations voluntarily, and when they cannot, the court provides flexible options before involving collections. This year, 31 cases, or 7% of the total number of cases sent to collections, were traffic infractions. And that was only after every in-house effort was made to help citizens resolve their fines. What is the collection rate? Our municipal court collection rate on traffic infractions prior to being sent to a collection agency remains very strong. It was 96% in 2024 and 92% so far in 2025 on infractions. This reflects the community's willingness to comply in the court's supportive approach. Modest fine adjustments are not expected to change that trend, but will help keep fines meaningful enough to encourage timely payment and reinforce accountability. How many people are issued warrants? The number of warrants for traffic infractions is very small. Of the 928 active municipal court warrants in the system right now that have been issued in the last year, only 5% are for traffic infractions. Most warrants for infractions are resolved without a jail booking. How many people end up in jail because a warrant was issued for non-appearance? Very few citizens are jailed for traffic infractions. Of the 1,378 municipal court warrants that were served in the past year, only 30 were warrants for traffic infractions. Those were often combined with additional warrants for misdemeanor charges. How effective is community service and how is it measured? Community service is an extremely valuable option, both for citizens and the community. On average, 43 individuals complete nearly 400 hours of community service work every month, benefiting organizations like the Humane Society, the Ballard Center, and Just Food. In 2025, fines have been reduced by nearly $38,000 through community service. How does a person find information out about options to comply with the traffic fine? The court provides clear information on every citation about how to contact the court and pay their fine. We also maintain a detailed webpage with links to forms, such as the motion for reduction of fines due to hardship. How accessible is that information? The information is accessible both on the citation and on our website. Our staff is also very happy to help if they call in. Can the city beef up its website and make it a more proactive tool to help citizens comply? This is a great question. Accessibility is a top priority of ours, and in 2026, there's going to be a citywide website redesign that will make our website even more accessible, and we're going to be working to explore more ways to make more important information visible and user-friendly to the public. The court's goal is to maintain fairness and transparency while ensuring fines remain an effective tool for promoting safety and accountability. Adjusting fines after 12 years helps Lawrence stay aligned with peer communities and supports the resources necessary to continue providing the fair, responsive court services our residents expect and deserve. Some additional questions that have been posed. How is the fine amount determined? We researched fines and fees in several peer communities. We felt it appropriate to establish a fine in the mid-range of where the surrounding communities stand. The total cost, for example, of a traffic infraction in the Douglas County District Court, $183. In our neighboring college community of Manhattan, the citation cost is $173. Likewise, in Udora, the citation cost is also $173. Our fine after the increase will be $163 for the same offense. That is less than those three communities. Another question asked, whose income are we basing the fines on? Our fines are not based on anyone's income. This is a modest increase after 12 years of having no increase. The goal is to enhance safety in our community and encourage adherence to traffic laws. We do not have the resources in-house to determine each individual's income and base fines off of that. We offer several opportunities for citizens to comply. Community service is offered to everyone at $10 an hour. Time to pay is generously granted. Citizens who may be struggling with hardship may petition the court for a reduction or waiver of fines and fees. I'm happy to answer any other questions if you have any.
That was quite complete, thank you, appreciate that very much.
Sure.
Any questions for?
Those answered my questions.
That was great.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Vicki.
Okay, Commissioners, any further discussion on this item, or is there a motion, or do we want to?
No, I appreciate the answers, appreciate the comments, and, and I do think, you know, again, we're still on the low end compared to some of our neighboring communities, which I'm fine with, but I also think we need to, you know, keep, keep the fines going. As Samuel said and others, it's important to make sure you're dissuading speeding and trying to keep the traffic, you know, to keep the traffic safe. And so, and I think we balance that well with the options of Judge Kopecky does a great job, I think, in offering community service, offering continuances, and so appreciate his work as well, as well as the co-clop staff, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So if nothing else, I move to adopt on first reading, ordinance number 10174.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Finkel-Dai, second by Sellers, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, our work session item was deferred, and we're going to go ahead and move on to Commission items. Commissioners, anything to bring up at the Commission item level?
Well, I have a quick one. I know that we have the upcoming draw event for World Cup that's coming up that first week in December, and I just wanted to see if, I know the group that's working on it, they're not the Incident Command Group, they're now Lawrence 2026, if maybe that Tuesday before, or maybe that Tuesday after, we could get an update on some of the work that's been going? Because I'd like, what I'd like to see is us have that either bi-monthly, mostly maybe monthly update so that we're more aware and addressed of what's going on.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, we'd like that.
Yeah, I think, we're getting close now.
Well, and after the announcement, it'll maybe be a little more interesting.
Yes.
I sat in on this meeting last week. They'd mailed out some, were a bunch of people from other cities that were potentially hosting, you know, they gave us some timelines and that, you know, it's really going to bleed deep into February probably, it seems like, before we really have a conclusion on whether or not we're going to have anything, it seems like, so...
Really? As late as February?
Yeah.
I thought it was supposed to be in December.
Kurt, people can't hear us, are you still back there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, people can't hear us?
Hello? Yeah, my mic's not on.
I'm hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there was a issue on Zoom, and Kurt has fixed that.
Yeah, no, I, I think, like I said, there's the, the Incident Command piece of it, and I know there, we're seeing more community members who are wanting to come in and kind of understand some of the bits of the ins and outs. And so I know the chamber is doing some things that are geared more towards some businesses. There's, we're still missing some gaps. I think this, as we provide maybe these work sessions to get more information sharing out to the general public so they kind of understand some of the nuances. We've even had some, we had a couple of consent agenda items that referenced things to World Cup as it relates to short-term rental leases and things of that nature. So it's just good to have that, whether it's a memo, work session update, so that as collective, as a collective body, we're...
We all know, yeah, for sure, that'd be great. I agree with you, because I, I only signed in because I kind of wondered what was going on, because I hadn't heard anything lately, so appreciate that. Perhaps we can get a better update on that. Anything else to bring up this evening?
I do have an item. Obviously, we have a opening forthcoming in our city manager, and I think we want to try to get that process moving. So I'd be interested in seeing if this commission would be willing to allow us to direct staff, I think Sheri, Craig, and maybe Tony, to use our cooperative agreement and bring back any proposals for consulting services to do a search for the city manager and bring that back on the December 2nd, so we can start that process as soon as we get the new commission seated.
So this would be the consulting group that would help us select a city manager, and there are four or more that we can select from existing contracts?
Yeah, if there's, if, if, I think that's right, four, and if we don't like any of them, we can do an RFP, but if we can find one we like, we can get the process going.
Be in favor of that.
Yeah, I think that's...
Okay.
Is that clear enough?
Reasonable. It is, just a clarification, do you, do you want them for consideration on December 2nd?
I think we do.
Okay, so I'll get them before that, so that we'll have them prepared and posted with the agenda packet.
By December, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Okay. Great, thanks for doing that, yes. Any other Commission items?
Hold on, I had one more, but now I forgot.
Uh-oh.
What was it? Now, I forgot, but I'm sure you'll come back.
I'll come to you in a minute, I'm sure.
Yes.
Well, I'll, I'll make a quick note, and this might be just some, something for us to think about, and maybe we can come back with something next week. And I do know the Haskell Foundation is having a, a gala event, let's see, 2nd, 9th, so the 16th of December, and it's, would be during the time of the commission meeting, but just wanted us to take a look at that. I know oftentimes, we're, the city, we send representation for different community service, different community outreach events and social events, so wanted us to be able to, maybe there's an option there for us to make sure we have support from the city, so something to think about, and if we want to discuss it, then we can.
December 19th, okay.
16.
16, sorry.
16.
You said, I, you were right, so is, are you suggesting maybe one of us go too, or, or, no, just wanted to make sure I just...
I don't want to suggest, I want us all to kind of...
Okay, cool.
Think about, maybe we can come up with something, consensus on something.
Appreciate that, thank you. All right, did you, did it come to you?
Did not come to me.
Good, good try. Future agenda items? It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and I just do, I want to say for the 18th, I just want to point out, it's not listed because we don't have regular agenda items, but the meeting, we are still having the meeting.
On the 16th?
Sorry.
November.
See, I, you didn't, oh, 18th, sorry. November 18th, sorry. Next week. Got it, thank you. We are still going to have a meeting?
The next week's meeting is still on, yes.
Goodness, where did November go? I said two weeks, I'm like, no, the 18th is next, like, where did November go? It literally just started.
Got it, so next week's meeting's still going to occur, got it, thank you. Anything else? I don't see, okay, the city managers report?
Thanks, Mayor. The only item listed on there is the regular monthly police report, and obviously made an announcement on Friday and expressed my, my great appreciation, and I'm, I'm going to be around for a while, so I'll save most of my comments for later, but just thank you and looking forward to finishing strong and also making sure we get a next great city manager in this chair to keep moving this community forward, so...
I appreciate that, thank you, Craig. Public comment on the city managers' report?
Eric Hyde, 66046, when I learned about this, I, I know that we've had some problems, Craig, but I'm honestly going to miss you as a city manager, so, I know a lot of people don't like you, but I think you done a really good job in a lot of things, and not everybody's perfect, so as far as your consulting, I don't think you should do that. I think you guys should just do the right thing and have it be open, and I don't think you guys should do consulting and hire law firms to do consulting. It's kind of a conflict of interest, I think, maybe, I don't know if I'm wrong, but I think you should just hire somebody who really wants to be a good city manager, and I mentioned a long time ago that Brandon McGuire, I think he'd be a good candidate, and, because he's from Lawrence, and I, we don't, I don't really agree with Brandon McGuire on everything, but I know he's got a heart, I think he'd be a great person for the job, so, and I'm going to miss you, Craig, so, I've become a lot better man over the years, and being a father, and now I'm a home, homeowner, and I'm going to be a father again of another one, so, yeah, we just need to all get together, and I just try to do it internal, I'm sorry, this will be a bit off topic, but thank you, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. We appreciate those comments. Any other public comment on the city managers' report? Is there one online?
Thank you. Absolutely incredible, the amount of clicks I have to do in order to have this little conversation for my three minutes, irrespective. The police department has failed to come back to our town and talk about the FUSIS, you know, we're going to look inside your house when we can initiative. There was supposed to be a report back from the police department with respect to, nah, we're going to put that on pause. Do I need to send you people more information, or are you able to look at it yourself and see that we were promised to have certain data? Where the fuck is that shit? I'm going to come up in here every goddamn motherfucking week until you people decide to obtain accountability from those that we pay good money to. You know, you had a group of children come up here and go, woo, we're all worried about FUSIS, but where are they? Here's the deal. How you like that? Here's the deal. I sound like Donnie J. Trump, making a motherfucking deal, and I'm going to come in here and I'm going to talk about shit using colorful language instead of the educated language that I was given, because you people seemingly don't want to play ball. Where is the town with respect to FUSIS and the pause? This report given by the police department says not a motherfucking thing. How many people have been beaten by our police department hidden by, it's an incident report? Because you know, our town allows people to beat people below the neck, and it is not considered a use of force. I understand you don't give a shit about this. I do. And I do across the United States of America. Why does Lawrence, Kansas want to think it is separated from all, everywhere else? It is not. These motherfucking cops think alike across the United States of America. Why are...
Time.
Fuck you, good bu...
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else online?
We do have one more. John, you can go ahead and provide your comments.
Were you not able to hear me?
No, we can now.
Okay, yes. A couple of items, just in reference to earlier about audio issues. There were quality issues, but audio was coming in from, fine, at least from this end on the Zoom land. However, apart from that, I'd like to offer a prayer of reconciliation, peace, and grace into the life of Mr. Watts. He's apparently not doing too well. That's all.
Is that it, John?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mike, can I make comment?
You've already done that, I think, on this. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Is this the same manager report still? Still on the same manager's report?
Jeez, Mike, I ain't spoke on it yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was that the last one? I, I lost.
Well, I'm gonna say the same thing. You know what I'm gonna say. What in the world did that have to do with the, the business of the city manager report with that guy just said there with the audio video, video issues? And then offering a prayer to Stephen Watts? Aren't you, aren't you, isn't your guys' rule to only address you guys, so now he's get to address Stephen Watts and talk shit on him for, for what reason? And moreover, how, how does that relate to the city manager's report? Your guys' rules say that for these individual items, they shall be germane, has to be germane, otherwise it's a violation of your policy that you instruct on a hair trigger with me to get me out of these meetings. But yet, why do they get to just talk about whatever they want to? Matter of fact, why am I even able to talk about what I'm talking about right now? How does this relate to the, to the manager's report at all? Mike, how, Tony, how does that relate? So many inconsistencies in these meetings. Makes it hard for people to come in and know what, what they're allowed to talk about and what they're not allowed to talk about. So we should just stick with free speech, right?
Okay. So any more comments on the city manager's report this point in time?
Yes. By the way, how the city commission, the way how this is, the meetings, it's an embarrassment to the world and to the community, the profanity and what happens here. I once heard that the use of profanity is a feeble mind trying to express itself. And yes, if there should be a prayer offered, a prayer could be offered, because this is not, this is not a civilized meeting at all, or the people that are coming in to be using so much profanity. It's sad. Lawrence is a good community, and people are watching us all over the community tonight. They consider us a laughing stock, and it's not right.
Thank you, David. All right. Anything specific to the city manager's report? Thank you. Commission calendar? All right. Nobody's got any comments on that.